Been meeting for September 29th, 2022. To order, a little bit late, sorry, 6:06 because of technical difficulties. So on the agenda for the meeting tonight is the call to order, the Town of Hardwick Greenwich Road Pump Station Bid Award and Adjournment. Do we want to wait for Scott to join us? Perhaps while we're waiting. Greg, would you like to speak briefly about the, to the board about the the opinion or your response to the letter we were copied on relative to Article 97?
Yes, thank you to you, Madam Chair. Good evening. I'm sorry?
I think you're okay.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Greg Corbo, I'm Town Counsel for the Town of Hardwick. And as you may recall, a few weeks ago, we were asked to look at the current proposed site for the pump station for part of the sewer system and whether that site was subject to Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution. Article 97 provides certain procedural protections for lands that have been dedicated to environmental conservation or agricultural uses. So we originally looked at this issue and determined that the property was not subject to Article 97. At that time, we had just the deed by which the town acquired interest in the land. And because that deed had no restrictions on the town's use of the land, we formed the opinion that it was not subject to Article 97. Subject to issuance of that opinion, we were provided with further documentation concerning the town's original acquisition of the property as well as a subsequent transfer of a portion of the property to the Conservation Commission. So as a result of those documents, we went back and we reconsidered our original opinion. However, we remain at the conclusion that the property is not subject to Article 97. And bearing in mind that if a property is subject to Article 97, then there are certain procedural steps that need to be taken in order to change the use of that land to a use that is inconsistent with the Article 97 purposes. And those procedural steps include approval of a two-thirds vote of both houses of the legislature and approval of the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, who generally requires the designation of replacement property for property that's taken out of Article 97. So again, we looked at these, these original documents and what we found was that in order for Article 97 to apply, the property must have been acquired for an Article 97 purpose with an intention that that the land be permanently dedicated to that purpose in some sort of formal way that prevents its use for any other purpose. Alternatively, land that is not acquired for an Article 97 purpose can later be so designated again by a formal declaration. So with respect to this property, we found that in 1910, the town received a donation of funds for the purposes of purchasing land for the benefit of the Hardwick Fair and other agricultural purposes within the town. And that in 1911, town meeting authorized the purchase of this parcel and another parcel in town using funds from that trust that was established. According to the town meeting vote in 1911, the subject property was, was for the purpose of quote unquote agricultural work. And at that time, the property had a number of apple orchards on it as well as a residence. And there was a dual purpose there for the property to be used as both a residence and an apple orchard. As you know, the, the use of the land as an apple orchard or any other type of farm has been long since discontinued. And we found no record to suggest that the the use of the land for agricultural purposes has been permanently restricted either through the filing or recording of an APR or through any other type of restriction. And in fact, we know that the property has not been used for agriculture, but it has been used for purposes of the fairgrounds and for use of other uses by the public, which is not consistent with preservation of the land. And in addition to that, in 1998, a portion of the land was sold to a third party by a town meeting vote. And there's no evidence that, that the town complied with the requirements of Article 97 at that time or that it viewed any portion of this property as being subject to Article 97. So we remain at, at the opinion that this property was not acquired for purposes of Article 97. And we are also of the opinion that the subsequent vote in 1998 was not sufficient to designate this as Article 97 land. Again, that vote did two things. First, it authorized a transfer of part of the property to a third party by sale. And then it transferred another portion of the property to the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes. However, nothing was recorded. There is no conservation restriction in the chain of title for the property. And as I indicated, there's no evidence to suggest that the use of the land has been limited to conservation or open space purposes. To the contrary, this property has long been used as the site of a fair where many people and animals congregate, which is something that is diametrically opposed to conservation, which is, you know, leaving land undisturbed in its original native state. So in the absence of, you know, use of the land for conservation purposes or a formal dedication of it and the absence of any evidence to suggest that any of these uses or designations are permanent, we remain of the opinion that Article 97 does not apply. Likewise, we remain of the opinion that site plan approval does not apply. And therefore, based on the, the town meeting votes that have already occurred, the, the board is able to designate a portion of this property for use as a sewer pump station.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions, Kelly or Rob? Up for Greg? So you were both forwarded, we received this late this afternoon. You were both forwarded a copy of this recently. So we can accept this, this, this evening? Or you probably, neither of you have really had the opportunity to?
She's stuck. Yeah, you're, you're stuck, Julie.
Thanks. Did I phrase?
Yes.
I'm gonna turn my video. Okay, so I'm gonna turn my video off. It'd probably be a little bit better. So let me start again. So I know that both Kelly and Rob just received this document recently. We did get it later this afternoon. So it's really the preference of accepting this? Differ on accepting this until our next meeting? Or if you're prepared to, you know, accept the response from KP Law that was just outlined by Greg at tonight's meeting?
I am comfortable with either way. Nothing has changed. We did acknowledge receipt of the last one. So I guess I would look for Rob's input as well.
Rob, do we still have you? I know he's traveling, so. Well, let's continue on. We can defer that until. Let's just make sure he's still on.
I just texted him.
He may have muted himself.
He doesn't look muted, though.
Okay. We can now.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Uh, well, I, I heard what Greg said. Yes. I'm a little confused with the details of this. I just hope that he's got an ironclad case here because the field's been used as a hay field, not just the fairground, so it's agricultural use. But, I mean, he is a lawyer, so I have to go with his opinion. So I, I haven't read the opinion. I don't know if when it got sent out, but.
So Kelly, maybe I can recommend that everybody reads the opinion before you acknowledge receipt. And, you know, that to recognize that the attorneys understand and are of the mind that the use is not changing to put the accessory use of this public utility on this. So it'll still be hay, it'll still be used for the fair, et cetera. But that's in the letter, so you might wanna, you know, I don't, it's completely up to you. I just think I could give you, you know, perspective of reading it and observing it before you acknowledge receipt of it, which could be done on Tuesday at your next meeting. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, so between now and Tuesday, if Kelly and Rob, if you can take a look at the letter. I have read it and we'll acknowledge receipt of it at our meeting on Tuesday. I will, I will tell you, though, after reading it, Greg has actually given more, much more detail, important detail. The, the letter summarizes their opinion, but I think we've gotten, you've heard a little bit more detail than that supports what's in the opinion, so. Okay, so we will, we'll, we will acknowledge receipt of that on Tuesday. Second, we're sort of, next on the agenda is the Town of Hardwick Greenwich Road Pump Station Bid Award. Justin, would you like to speak on this? Or would you like us just to go ahead and review the process? Nicole, review the process?
I mean, I, I'll leave that to you. I mean, I could just give a brief overview. You know, bids were open for the project. DPC has put together a recommendation to award memorandum, which everybody, you know, should have, or at least Nicole always provided that. We're recommending, you know, who should be awarded the project, you know, what should be awarded, et cetera. If you want me to get into the details, that's fine. But Nicole, I'll let you speak as to what, you know, the intent tonight is, which I believe to be, to vote to accept this recommendation to award so that we can let USDA know tomorrow, prior to the October 1st deadline on Saturday. And stick to, you know, meeting all the requirements of the letter of conditions and, and keep the USDA loan and funding, you know, in place and, and not in jeopardy. So I'll let Nicole, you know, speak if she wants me to get into the, the specifics. I'm not sure how much, you know, people have already reviewed this letter and so on. So I'll, I'll turn it over to, to you guys.
Nicole, do you wanna, do you wanna field it or do you want me to review the memorandum?
No, I can absolutely do that. So we opened the bids the other day and then Justin took them back to the office to review them for completion and for, you know, accuracy and see that they are qualified, you know, for their qualifications. And then, you know, with Massachusetts procurement, of course, you have to go with the lowest qualified bidder. So I know that, you know, the three of you understand that for the public, when you are doing procurement, you have to go with the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, unless there is a very well documented reason that you shouldn't. And so after reviewing all of the recommendations, the Ricardi bid was the lowest and most responsive and responsible and has been reviewed by DPC. It is conditional on USDA reviewing it as well and making sure all the qualifications are there for federal purposes. But it, it seems like, you know, a really great proposal. And I, along with DPC, recommend that you go with the recommended bidder, who would be Ricardi or Richardi, I'm not sure the pronunciation. But they were the lowest bidder, lowest responsible and responsive bidder. Out of five bidders.
So, yeah, I'm just gonna say out of, just to give a frame of reference. Richardi, is it Richardi?
Yep.
Okay. Richardi Brothers, their base bid was 1.1726998. The highest one that we received was 2,269. And the rest of them were sort of spread in between. And so, so Nicole and Justin, when we are looking at the the sorry, we're looking at
Recommendation letter?
Your summary. I want to be sure that the motion is appropriate, that we're actually stating the motion appropriately. So we are actually, your recommendation is to approve Richardi Brothers, Inc. for the base bid plus additive alternative number one. Is that correct?
That is correct, subject to approval by USDA and then contingent upon receipt and review of the required bonds and insurance of Richardi Brothers.
Okay.
So basically, that, that last sentence there on the, the first page of that memorandum pretty much covers it. Yep, you got it.
Kelly or Rob, do you have any items of discussion? We don't have Rob.
Oh, is he gone?
Yep, he's gone. Kelly, do you have any questions on?
No, I don't. I've read this letter.
Okay.
Trying to text it again.
While, while we're waiting, Nicole, is there anything else relative to this that we should talk about or no?
I don't think so, other than, you know, this is a typical, obviously, bid award that a town would do for any of its work, except for USDA. So USDA then needs to also vet this company and make sure that they have all of the requirements that the federal government will need. So there's even more than would be required if the town was paying for it. So, you know, that's the only thing, is that once the board approves it, you know, it, it is conditionally approved to the USDA, then going through their vetting process and, and, and being okay with that and giving their letter, you know, their sticker of approval. Scott was there for our bid opening, opening too, and he's here now. And so he's well, I think he's more aware, obviously, of what it entails than I am. But, you know, I think we're on the same page and, you know, we would always recommend that we go with our engineer's recommendation and the lowest bidder, lowest responsible and responsive bidder.
Scott, is there anything you wanted to mention?
My biggest thing is that, you know, I really hope that in the end or at some point, alternate two can get done. Because that would be the gravity portion of this proposal. And gravity line is just a win-win for the town. It's gonna make the system more efficient, it's gonna make it pump faster, and it's going to have no future cost to the town compared to what he forced me and it's put in. I just urge everyone involved to, to really push for that gravity section of line.
So the alternate two is the gravity section. And the reason that it was being sort of on hold is because, you know, with everything so up in the air, that we want to go out to bid at least for the first, I always do a station treatment plant to make sure that that's gonna come in, so all of the money can, can be used as much as it possibly can efficiently. So I think that it's wise, you know, to sort of just hold off on alternate two and see what the, what the bid comes out for the first treatment plant. And then if we see some favorable numbers, because this bid came in favorable, we could add it back in. And I think it shows USDA that we're trying to be fiscally responsible and, you know, really doing our due diligence to make this project as affordable as possible. But I completely hear Scott and I will, it's on the front burner. And once that second bid comes in for the treatment plant, I will most definitely request USDA and, and, and through, of course, DPC, that we put alternate two back on the table. Rob's back on, Julie.
Yep, sorry, I was trying to unmute myself. So Rob, I'm not sure how much you heard before you weren't there.
All I heard was her talk about alternate two.
Okay, so I'm not sure how much you caught of Justin and Nicole talking about the bid process, but there were five bidders, as you know, from the letter. Richardi Brothers, Inc. was the lowest bid, as you know. So what we are talking about and the ultimate goal is to recommend that the Town of Hardwick conditionally award the project number one, the Harvick Road Pumping System Upgrades Project, which is a base bid and additive alternative one to Richardi Brothers of Worcester in the amount of 1,774,498, subject to approval by USDA and contingent upon receipt and review of the contractually required bonds and insurance certificates from Richardi Brothers, Inc. So that's what we have before us. Kelly or Rob, any, any comments on that?
No.
Was that a no from Rob?
No, no comments.
Okay. Okay, so.
I would, I would make a motion that we accept the recommendation from DPC and continue conditionally award project number one, Pumping Station Upgrade Project to Richardi Brothers of Worcester, Mass. Base bid of 1,726,998 dollars plus alternative additive alternative number one for 47,500 for a total of 1,774,498 dollars. Sorry, 1,774,498 million, subject to approval by USDA and contingent upon receipt and review of contractually required bonds and insurance certificates from Richardi Brothers, Inc.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by Kelly. Actually, we're on Zoom, so we're gonna need to call the roll. But that's okay. It was moved by Kelly and seconded by Rob. Any other discussion? So let me just recap the motion. The motion was to accept the recommendation of DPC relative to the Town of Hardwick and conditionally awarding project number one, Harvick Road Pumping System Upgrades Project, the base bid and additive alternate number one to Richardi Brothers, Inc. of Worcester, Mass. In the amount of 1,774,498 dollars, subject to approval by USDA and contingent upon receipt and review of the contractually required bonds and insurance certificates from Richardi Brothers, Inc. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no other discussion, I'm gonna call the roll. Kelly Kemp?
Yes.
Robert Ruggles?
Yes.
Julie Quink is a yes, so the motion is unanimous. So from a procedural standpoint, we have just, as you heard Justin say. So Justin, perhaps you can, if you're still with us, now that we've conditionally approved the, the project for Richardi Brothers, could you just briefly tell us next steps?
Yep, so first thing tomorrow, I will call Joe Delbo, who's running, you know, this project at USDA. I'll inform him of this decision. They may want, you know, something official just documenting the vote. We'll get that over to them. In the meantime, with your approval, I will send a notice of conditional acceptance of bid letter to Richardi Brothers to alert them to this. Obviously, it'll be conditioned upon USDA approval and bonds and insurance. And that will allow them to start basically moving on the paperwork end of things, putting bonds and insurance together for review. So those are kind of the two next steps in parallel, getting USDA, you know, alerting them and having them go through their vetting process, as Nicole, you know, talked about. And then alerting Richardi basically to this, so they could start preparing the paperwork that, you know, this approval is conditioned upon, so we can review that.
Great, thank you.
And then, I guess, you know, subs- I guess subsequent to that too, I should just mention, you know, if everything checks out, then the next step would be, you know, DPC preparing physical contracts, you know, with those to be executed between both parties and USDA. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin.
Can I? I just have a quick question. Because knowing that Nicole is gonna be away for a couple of weeks on a planned, you know, time away, I'm just, you know, is that something that we will have to act on quickly? We may have to, you know, put together a meeting while she's gone if those need to be signed? I don't know. I mean, I guess we'll just have to wait and see.
Justin, can you give us an indication of time?
Oh, yeah, ju- just talking, you know, right now, I don't think the actual physical signing of the contracts will, you know, have to happen in the next two weeks. I think USDA typically takes five to 10 days to do their review, so we're probably looking at a couple of weeks before, you know, we actually even hear back from them. So I think, I think that's good timing probably for your trip, Nicole.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for Justin or for Greg? Okay, so I just want to say something here. We're at September 29th. October 1st was our deadline. I just, as the chair, I just want to say a couple of words. I want to say a huge thank you to Kelly and to Rob. Rob, you've not been in the process quite as long as us on, in the seat that you're in, but I know you've been watching the process for a long time. Process started long before Kelly and I were even on the board. There has been a lot of work that has been done by the three of us. Nicole has entered the scene and sort of make, you know, made everything happen as well. But a huge shout out to the two of you. I know this is not an easy process. I know for the folks that are sitting on the meeting, listening, it's, this is not, the, the project isn't, I, I envisioned us standing around popping champagne and celebrating. And it feels like this has been anything but that. It's been a lot of hard work, but I want to say a huge thank you to Kelly and Rob for all of your input. It's not been an easy process. I want to say thank you to the people who have been involved in the process and voicing your opinions. They have not gone unheard. You know, over, over cocktail many moons after this project is done, we can talk about all of the heartache and work that went in the last year or so to try to secure this money back. Also, a huge thank you to Justin and to Dave for the guidance along the way. And of course, a huge thank you to Greg and KP Law for the many phone calls, many letters. We're not done yet. We still have them, but appreciate the guidance. Also, a huge thank you to Scott. Scott, you've not been operating under the best conditions for a period of time and we're on our way to get things working right for you. and we're on our way to get things working right for you and for the town. And also a huge thank you to Nicole, um, many phone calls, many late nights, many calls with legal counsel, um, USDA, uh, Justin and Dave, any other parties that, um, have had concerns or questions and have visited Nicole occasionally or frequently, um, to voice opinions and concerns, uh, just a huge thank you. So, um, again, I, I wish we were all together celebrating with champagne or something. Um, some may not feel it's something to celebrate, but, you know, I, I think we have to look at the end goal. Um, the road has been a little rocky. Well, let's face it, it's been a lot rocky. Um, and it hasn't started with the three board members, but, you know, it will hopefully end or be on its way with the three, uh, board members and the help of Nicole and, um, our, you know, professional partners. But, um, I, this is sort of a momentous, um, day for the town that we're able to, to, you know, actually move forward with this project. Um, it won't, I, I don't work in construction, but for those of you who do, um, you know, we'll have more bumps, but as long as we can move together and, um, not always agree, we don't always have to agree. That's the beauty of having a committee or a board. We can listen to different opinions. That's the beauty of having interested citizens, um, coming forward with concerns and, uh, us doing our best to try to address them with our professional partners. So thank you all, um, and, um, I appreciate every single one of you. And we are on to the next step, so this is exciting. Um, we're on to bigger and, uh, other different things next week. So doesn't seem like we get a chance to rest too much after going through all of the hard work, but, um, that's what progress is, right? Um, moving forward and continuing to move forward. So thank you to everybody. Nicole, I don't know if you wanna say anything or if we're Kelly or Rob or if we're good to go.
Thank you, Julie.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure, Bill, go ahead.
Um, so, uh, this, um, whatever this document is from KP Law, can our board get a copy of this? Um, and in fact, I guess the real question is, um, whatever was written, is this intended as a response to the questions that we posed in the Conservation Commission memo? I don't know if you guys have an answer to this yet.
So, um, I'm not sure if you were on, Bill, when we talked about it. We haven't formally acknowledged receipt of the letter, um, from KP Law. Uh, it just was forwarded to us this afternoon and Kelly and Rob have not had the chance to review it. So they, they have been forwarded the letter. Once we, we will acknowledge it on Tuesday, we will, we will acknowledge receipt of it. So it will be, once that acknowledged, that, that acknowledgement is done, um, absolutely free to have. This letter is not in response, um, well, Greg, let, I'd rather let Greg speak perhaps, but my understanding is that this is in response to specifically article, uh, um, something that was, uh, we, something that we were copied on relative to, um, KP Law and, and an opinion on Article 97. I do not believe it's directly in response to your concerns as conservation, but Greg, do you wanna answer that for Bill?
Uh, sorry for the delay there. Um, uh, good evening, um, Bill. Yes. So, um, the letter is not in specific response to, um, the concerns raised by the Conservation Commission. Um, it, it really just goes to the authority of the Board of Selectmen to use a portion of this property for a sewer pump station. Um, you know, I'm certainly happy to talk to you about, you know, whatever concerns that, that you have as a Conservation Commission going forward. Um, you know, as I sit here now, I recall that one of those concerns was with respect to, um, the, the notice of intent that had been filed and the designation of the location. And it's my understanding that that particular issue has been resolved. Um, and really with respect to the, the remainder of the property, your role as a Conservation Commission does not change, in my opinion. Um, so, you know, whatever the Conservation Commission was doing with this property before, it will continue to do that now. Um, there will just be a pump station on a small portion of it.
Thanks, Greg. So, um, I hope we can see some kind of responses to the actual questions that we posed in our memo. So, um, I guess we'll wait and see whatever this document looks like and then we'll decide if we have further questions or if our questions have been answered. Our questions were posed in the memo, so, you know, anybody can take a look at that and see what we were hoping to get answers to, um, which wasn't really completely discussed tonight. So take a look and see what you think.
Nicole, can we, um, make sure that we work with Greg and Bill?
Yes, I will absolutely work with Greg and Bill and, and we will get all of the questions answered that pertain to the Conservation Commission regarding this land, for sure. Um, if any of the questions, uh, don't necessarily have Conservation Commission jurisdiction, then we, I'm sure we have the answer in another document somewhere else. So I will help, I will work with you to get the questions answered. Um, there, you know, it is in the care and protection of the Conservation Commission and we'll talk about that more because obviously I don't think you've known that for all these years. Um, you know, so, uh, you know, let's, we should have some good dialogue around that and what you expect for the parcel. And, um, and, and then, you know, I think your biggest concern was that you have care and protection of this parcel and it's supposed to be, stay in conservation land and we still are of the mind that it's in conservation land. It'll still be used for the, for the fair, it'll still be used to hay. Um, you know, maybe we'll have to look at some things where, you know, I don't know. What the fair does there, does it affect the conservation of that land and, and of the water? We might have to have deeper kinds of conversations on that. But we will most definitely make you, I will get, I will get all of those answers for you. Again, if it doesn't have to do with conservation in that, in that, in that memo, like DEP had said, you know, there's certain jurisdictions that you have and that you don't have, then I will make sure that you have the answers to the questions that may not have pertain to the Conservation Commission directly.
Yeah, so let me help out by clarifying a little bit. You know, we talked about the two different tracks. Our board has its wetland responsibilities and then there were some apparent responsibilities that were designated to our board. And what I was asking was, we'd like some opinion on paper as to what our roles and responsibilities really should be and what we're legally responsible for. So take a look at the questions and, you know, that's what we were hoping, um, to have a little bit of assistance from KP Law on. Um, we would like to know what our role, what our responsibilities are as a board here when, when some of these documents have mentioned, you know, under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. The land is not owned by the commission, it's not owned by any board, it's owned by the town. We would just like some help interpreting what care and custody of the commission really means and legally what our responsibility should be. So.
We can do that.
Yeah, we're just trying to be clear about this, so, you know, any help is appreciated.
Yes, Bill, um, thank you for that, that clarification and, um, yes, I can certainly help you, um, you know, better understand. Cause you're right, you have on the one hand, your regulatory authority under the Wetlands Protection Act and that's likely clear to you because you do that on, on a regular basis. But, um, in terms of what you're supposed to be doing with this particular property, um, you know, the town meeting vote doesn't give you much direction. Um, and so, you know, we can certainly help you based on our experience as to what types of things that you should be doing as a commission to fulfill your responsibility as having care, custody of this land.
We would appreciate that. Again, you know, our questions are worded in the memo and I spent a lot of time thinking about the wording, so take a look at that, everybody, and, and help us out. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Nicole, Kelly, Rob, anyone wanna say anything before we adjourn? Nicole?
I didn't wanna raise my hand in the Zoom, cause I don't know who's looking. Um, I just want to, uh, respond to your comments and thank you and thank you all. It really has been a very long and arduous process to get to where we are today and I'm very excited that we are finally moving forward and that the town is going to, um, really get this much needed work for the entire utility that it needs. And I can only tell you that I'm working diligently for the, the whole town, all of you, uh, my, did the best of my ability and, um, and that's what I'll continue to do onward and upward to the next project on Monday. So, uh, you know, it's, it's a, what is that, um, No Sleep for the Weary or something like that? So it's fine, it's great. We, we've, we've conquered this, we'll move on. We'll hopefully keep going forward and then we'll, we'll go on to our next projects as well. I have a lot of hope and, and optimism for Hardwick for the future and I certainly do with the three of you as a board. I've never had such a great board. Um, the attorneys, the, um, engineers, all, everybody's been extremely supportive, the town staff, our residents, and I, I'm just really excited and looking forward to the future. And thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Kelly or Rob, anything before we adjourn? No? Rob, are you still with us?
Oh, boy.
Okay.
His phone is there.
He's there. Um, okay, so hearing no other business, um, I would, um, ask for a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Rob, are you there to second?
Second.
Great, it's been moved and seconded, so, um, we are on Zoom, so we need to call the roll. Kelly Kemp?
Aye.
Rob Ruggles? Julie Quink is a yes. We're assuming Rob Ruggles is a yes because he seconded. Um, I think he's probably out of service.
Yeah.
So then.